...learnings from Workplace Denver and Town Hall Meetings presented by David Reynolds, Jeff Williams, Akam Holman, Tina Schaus, and Val Moraes. Everyone has been muted for audio quality and this presentation is being recorded. If you have any questions, please type them into the chat box and we'll review them during the Q&amp;A portion at the end of the webinar. And I do would like, would like to let everyone know there is a copy of the PowerPoint loaded into the control panel. If you would like a copy, you can simply download it from there. The FMCC provides many services to the FM community such as Ask the Expert, Find a Consultant, Locate a Speaker, and Online Educational Resources. You may find more information at their website, fmcc ifma.org. We'd also like to take this time to thank our sponsors. And also, when you do leave the webinar today, there will be a box asking you to take a survey and we do encourage you to take that survey as the FMCC board does look at that feedback. Okay? And these are our presenters today. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to FMCC President Val.
Yeah, morning, everybody. Good afternoon, good evening to the rest of the world. Today is the morning of the Friday, the 13th year in New Zealand. Yeah, so I'm not superstitious, so just a reminder that it is Friday, the 13th year in New Zealand. So today we're going to be discussing about the, the learnings from World Workplace Denver. And for me personally, it, it amazes, just the sheer scale of the event amazes me when I go to any of the World Workplace events. Next slide. Yeah, so, yeah, the, the, first, the, the, yeah, as I was saying, the, the sheer scale and size of the event amazes me, you know, the more than 5,000 delegates that attend this event along with the more than 300 exhibitors. So just to put it in perspective, we, in this part of the world, in New Zealand, Australia, would have a 300 or 350 delegates that sort of attend the national conference, not more than 25, 30 exhibitors. So to go and sort of be part of such a large-scale event is really amazing. So it's fantastic, just to be part of that event. So what we discussed and what we covered as part of the FMCC activities, we had a, had a nice evening, the, what we call the social evening, it was a nice place for socializing with a glass of wine and so, and we had about 28 or 30 people that attended this social evening. And we then sort of moved on the following day with, and had our annual general meeting at, at Denver. And as part of that, on the agenda, we had the introduction to the new board of 2015 and there was a swearing in as part of that activity. Minute of the last AGM was discussed, financials, and the STAG report activities were discussed. And also on the agenda was the, the Council of the Year of Board and the Professional Development of Board, as most of you would know that FMCC was probably part of in World of Board. And then we briefly touched on the FMCC vision, 1517. Yeah, one of the, one of the things that we sort of focused on was the STAG activities, STAG being the Strategic and Tactical Action Group of FMCC. We have done a number of webinars of the year and the, one of the biggest, I think, success we had also was the Membership Survey, a little, a little on it on the next slide, but White Papers, Podcasts, Social Media, and also the Scholarship. This takes a lot of, a lot of time and effort by the volunteers who work on this, on this group, which has done a marvelous job. And as you can see from those pictures, I think we began this whole group as wild horses running around trying to sort of get things done. And the, the picture on the right that you see is the workhorse of today, which is STAG. Next slide, please. So the Annual Membership Survey, as you can see from the screen, the year before, we had, you know, 16 people that responded while in the, in this year, we had about 33. So which was a, which I think is a huge success and it is important for us to find out what the membership needs. And this is the only way we can find out, is through surveys. And, and what we are today doing is that we pull that list together. Next slide, please. Next slide, Josh. Yeah, so the, the survey, the findings of the survey are now being worked on by members of the Strategic and Tactical Action Group, which is STAG. And what we're going to do is, we're going to actually come up with a priority list. So there's a team working on this and there will be an action plan. And this action plan will be part of that whole priority list that is being put together. And there will be some people that will be focused on actually delivering the action plan. FMCC Vision 1517. And now, what we sort of, what, what we sort of thought was this four Cs, which is Connect, Collaborate, Cultivate, and Complement, is going to be the, the, the vision for FMCC going forward. 1517 actually is basically kind of point based on the year 2015 to 2017. So this is a two-year kind of a plan or a vision. And, and I think we have started connecting already. We've, we're at the moment, we're making a huge, huge effort to connect with our membership, our sponsors, but also with other associations around the globe. At the, at the moment, we've got a couple of people that are working on building relationships with the Brazilian Association, ABREFAC, and the group that's, that is based out of Sao Paulo. Collaboration and is, is also one of the things that we are already doing, but I think that's one, that's something that we need to sort of build on and work towards making it stronger. And Cultivate and Complement obviously will come with, come, you know, we'll actually come alongside once we sort of push this whole connect and collaborate sort of part of the vision. So yeah, there's work in progress on this and hoping to see a lot of activities based on these four Cs happening in the next 12 months. Next slide, please. Josh, next slide. Yeah, so this World Workplace Asia-Singapore was a, was a good example of this four C, where we had the six, six of us consultants from various parts of the world coming together and actually sharing our thoughts and experiences with the 500 or delegates that were part of the World Workplace Asia-Singapore. Next slide, Josh. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Josh?
I'm advancing, it's, it's not going, but it's, I advanced, it's just going really slowly.
Right, right. Okay. I think this is the, this is my last slide, I think. I would be handing it over to the, my next fellow panelist. Yeah, for some reason, we are frozen on that same screen.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's me.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Josh. Good, good morning, good afternoon, and good evening. This is Tina Schaus and I get the honor of very quickly going over the awards and recognition that the FMCC receives. Next slide, please. One of the things that I wanted to particularly point out when this, when the next slide comes up, one of the things that I wanted to point out is, I've been involved, this was my 25th World Workplace. So it was my silver anniversary going to World Workplaces and it could not have been more fitting for me to see the progress in so many different people and councils, especially the FMCC. I, I used to be jealous of Utilities Council and some of the other ones and say, gosh, I wish, you know, I wish the FMCC would get their, get their due and boy, they did this year. The FM, the IFMA Council of the Year 2015 Award was given to the FMCC and it was definitely a team effort. There was a lot of different, I'm not going to go through all of the criteria that we had to submit in order to win this recognition, but for the Council of the Year Award and also the Professional Development Council of the Year Award, which basically means how did we support the professionals within our council? How did we help them grow? How did we help them network and become stronger consultants? That was, that was really the efforts that was put behind the professional development. And that could not have happened without Marcus Froll. Marcus was our rock star. He headed up the, technically was the Chair of the STAG Group that, that Val mentioned earlier. He also was our FMCC Volunteer of the Year Award, but like I said, you know, he was the engine that pushed from behind. John and Val led from the front and we got it done. And I could not be, I could not have been more proud when those, when those awards were given out. The other thing that I was particularly excited about was the Kit Tubusen Fellowship Award. Kit was a dear, dear friend of mine. And when we established the Kit Tubusen Fellowship Award, of course, you can imagine I was very supportive of that. But I think what's really important is that when people like Stephen Brown get awarded that and then they turn around and say, I'm going to invest this money into events and into education that's going to further the development of the FMCC, that was really great news. So my hat's off to you, Stephen, for doing that. The other thing that I'm very proud of us doing, which was one of the board decisions, I think we did last year or year before last, one of the things that we wanted to do was to recognize service and people's participation in the FMCC. And so what we did was, we decided to recognize everyone who has been in the FMCC, who has crossed over the 10-year milestone. And it's one thing to recognize them, but the other thing that we did was, we wanted to give and make a, make that recognition known to the foundation. So in order, in lieu of giving, you know, plaques or something else that someone has to find some place on their desk or on their wall, we decided to give honorarium to the, to the foundation, you know, for every person. So this year, for every member that crossed over, we gave $100 to the, to the foundation. And let me tell you, this has been a really great trendsetter because other people, and we've really touted our own horn and said to other councils, hey, well, we're challenging you guys to do the same thing. And to my knowledge, a few of the councils have actually taken up that challenge. So that's the great news that I get to share with you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Can you hear?
You go, David.
Okay. This is David Reynolds. Next slide, please. Marcus Froll and I attended the Council's Committee Town Meeting on October 6th. Pat Turnbull, the Committee Chair, led the discussion. She was generous to share her slides, which I modified for this brief talk. Ifma CEO John Perry and other committee members were also present. Pat, John, and the other members, welcome your feedback at any time. This is a work in progress. The final slide will show their contact information. I'm just waiting on the advance. The Council's Committee looks strategically at IFMA councils and communities to clarify, define, align, and strengthen these components. These serve the membership in different and complementary ways. In a survey of members of the IFMA Council, of IFMA councils, excuse me, earlier this year, five issues dominated the response. Two in particular arose around the relationships of councils, communities, and FM core competencies. These are confusion about terminology and meaning, and desire for clarity, alignment, deliverables, and a new model for council operations and funding. We will look for a moment at the initiative toward relieving the confusion and improving clarity and alignment. The councils appear on the left. The introduction of IFMA communities and practices several years ago created the categories shown on the right in the slide. With the exception of workplace evolutionaries, the next to last, these communities are not easy to distinguish from industries which have councils. Also, we do not see the 11 core FM competencies and how they fit in this organization. The committee will overhaul the Communities and Practice classification, making communities distinct from councils, and accommodating the core competencies. Committee's on schedule. The concept of alignment and structure is in place now and under refinement. Approval and launch will follow in 2016. Sorry about that. Here's where it's going at the moment. Councils are formed around industry-specific vertical markets. Communities will represent varieties of knowledge and core competencies across industries. Factors, which are geographically sorted, won't enter into our discussion now. I'm not sure how well you can see this, but I do have a printed copy here, I can clarify, but this table comes directly from the Council Committee presentation. Councils appear on the top and their membership at the time of the survey just below, for example, 282 for us at FMCC. The principal change is that communities, the inner vertical on the left, will directly reflect areas of FM knowledge. The far left column sets up a Strategic Advisory Group, SAG, for each of the seven communities identified. The 11 FM core competencies appear at the bottom, each color-coded to signify the community of knowledge where they most directly, where they arise and most directly fit. For example, while technology is involved in almost all of FM, the technology core competency originates in the technology slash BIM community. Note that the workplace strategy community does not currently have, doesn't currently give rise for core competency, but the leadership, finance, human factors, communication brings five core competencies into being. The other communities source one or more each. The proposed structure clearly distinguishes FM knowledge and core competency, that is communities, from FM councils and their industries. In the future, numbers in each cell can reflect community membership and participation from each council. Pat Turnbull, John Perry, Mary Ressler at IFMA, and the rest of the Council's Committee, one in our council, one at least in our council, I should say, welcome your feedback at any time concerning this work in progress. Their dedication is to serve the membership. Should what I presented strike you as unhelpful or a bad idea for any reason, please let them know. Objections are just as helpful as affirmations, sometimes more so. In our council, Ted Ritter, Val Moraes, and John Ringness receive regular updates as to, as this work progresses. Closing remark, I'm a member, excuse me, I'm helping a member who's preparing to take the CFM exam, and I find these developments most, most helpful toward his perception of FM core competencies and knowledge across this band of FM. And next slide. Jeff, it's all yours.
Thank you, David. Hello, everyone. I've been asked to talk about the House of Delegates Meeting and some of the other exciting things that are going on in IFMA. And so, House of Delegates is IFMA's annual general meeting and a lot of members come to sort of hear what's going on with the association and also raise accolades or concerns with the Board of Directors. And we do a lot of very standard annual general meeting things. We talked about the financial health of the organization, we talked about the foundation and the great things that they're doing with respect to the Global Workplace Initiative. In the State of the Association Report, we started talking about some of the excellent things that are being done at Service Center of Excellence, including the replacement of the Association Management System, which I understand to be coming online this month, which won't show a direct impact on members from an outside looking in. However, people like Josh are going to have amazing new tools that are able to do their job in a more effective manner and serve our membership far, far better than they have been able to before. And then we had Jim Lesch come to speak to us about the Global Job Task Analysis. And just so that I get it correct, I'm going to read this excerpt from the website. "IfMA's Global Job Task Analysis identifies the critical tasks and work activities of the facility management professional, the context in which those tasks and activities are carried out, and the most crucial knowledge and skills required to perform the job successfully. When completed, the global job task analysis process will provide a basis for developing exam specifications and curricula that accurately reflect the scope of practice and understanding of unique regional and industry needs." What Jim is asking for is for people to participate and that the survey will be distributed in January of 2016. And this is a key part to managing the credentials and learning initiatives that IFMA is putting And then the, the last section of the House of Delegates was something that's near and dear to my heart. I'm the Task Force Chair for Knowledge Strategy. And IFMA's Knowledge Strategy has been working for the last almost three years as a task force to start to put together an understanding of how do we help facility managers connect, share, learn, and grow? And we've been looking at the Knowledge Strategy both internal to IFMA and external, internal to IFMA staff and then external to our membership. We want to make sure that gaining knowledge is both easy, or is all of the things, easy, fun, and rewarding. And our first solution to that and our first product is the Knowledge Library. What we've been looking to do, sorry, next slide as well. So what you'll start to see is Knowledge Library splashed around the website with this logo, the books with the bookmark. And what we've developed is a, an extremely exciting online tool that's intended to aggregate all IFMA content. We've effectively designed a digital library inside the IFMA community that brings refreshed content relevant to facility managers. We're there to curate the library and that's the difference from a lot of available content, especially things that you pull from Google, you're not sure the validity of the information. So it's all been rigorously vetted by industry experts such as yourselves in, in the FM community and we have a team of SMEs aligned to the core competencies of IFMA. And really, the intent is to provide you with the highest quality and most relevant content. For those to come up. At launch, we had the, the eight content types available that you're seeing on the screen. And it's great to see so much content out there. We actually believe that we've really only scratched the surface of content that's available within IFMA. And in conversations that I had with Val and with Marcus and Ted Ritter, the FMCC and the Technology Council are looking to assist the Knowledge Library by providing content developed by the councils back to the library, which is really exciting. So we're very much looking forward to that. Next slide, please. When it says more content than ever before, we really mean that. There's going to be content added weekly. We're always looking for people to provide new content that they have made, maybe it may have developed on their own. It goes through the vetting process, it provides a great opportunity to share the knowledge that you have as a facility manager or consultant and it to be read by facility managers across the world. Next slide, please. So the next few slides are more about sort of giving you a flavor for what it looks like. We're certainly going to share news and updates as the, pardon me, the Knowledge Library progresses. We are considering this the first phase of evolutionary product and we intend to continuously add and reshape it based on the voice of our customer, which is you, the member. Next slide, please. We have robust search functionalities and ability to sort of pinpoint what you're looking for. We've aligned content to competency areas, we've aligned it to industry areas, there's keyword search functionality, and we have different tiers of content access. And basically, there is, there's an ability for people that are browsing the web to start to see the value of IFMA by having some content that's free. And that content is very carefully curated and it's out there. And then once you register for the community, still don't need to be a member, but you can get a little bit more content as a registered user. And then moving forward from that, every IFMA member has access to premium content, which is what we're seeing on the screen right now. Next slide, please. So as you drill down, you start to see more about the, the document that you're looking at or a piece of content and you have the opportunity to sort of at a glance the side of it's of interest to you or not and then move on. Next slide, please. There's also a level of social interaction and the intent is to create discussion groups around content and people are able to actually have a very robust conversation about pieces of content, like you would in any other blog or, or social media interaction. Thank you, Josh. Maybe one more click. There we go. And this is the interaction that we're talking about. Okay, so talking about contributors in the next slide, we'll keep going. Why is it different? All of the content goes through the Knowledge Library vetting process and we've been working very, very hard at this. Out of the 770 pieces that we vetted just prior to World Workplace, 40% of the criteria met the acceptance level to be included into the Knowledge Library. So we are being very critical and trying to make sure that the content is of high value to FM's. Next slide, please. And recognizing that we are a member-supported association, the, the value of the Knowledge Library is, is only as strong as a member participation. And so- And so if we go to the next slide, we did have over 65 volunteers involved in the vetting and reviewing. What we did is we recognized the group of people that contributed most heavily, but there were certainly 65 people that were helping us along the way. And it was a very, very strong showing on behalf of the membership. So I want to thank anybody that's participated to date and anybody that's interested in participating in the future. Your involvement will only help us get stronger. So the opportunities to get involved, and there are more than one way to get involved. If we go to the next slide, there's certainly the opportunity to write content, which I talked about. There's certainly the opportunity to review content. But the more that you interact with the content, share the knowledge that's coming through the Knowledge Library, the more buzz that will be created around the Knowledge Library and the more interest. We see this as an opportunity to show the value of IFMA to people that are non-members and to certainly enhance the value to members. Thank you very much.
Hello, this is Akim Homam. Good evening. I'm talking from the old part of the Western Hemisphere. And my part of the presentation is on, about the exhibition, and especially on technology, which was shown at the exhibition of World Workplace 2015. So the sources where you can get information, technology, innovation at World Workplace are numerous. So first of all, it's of course the Expo floor. We have a lot of exhibitors in the area of technology, but it's also the solution arenas, which are part of the Expo floor, where presentations are given by some of the exhibitors. And this year, one of the major topics was building information modeling, and it was also Internet of Things. I will come back to those terms a little later. Then, of course, we do have a lot of education sessions, and there are a lot of education sessions which are geared to technology. And of course, we have a lot of dead wrecking projects and events like the first evening where you have the chance to talk to a lot of techies, which are either there as delegates or exhibitors or speakers. Some buzzwords, and I've just mentioned two, which could be heard and found as headlines at World Workplace 15, was of course, building information model and modeling. I think this is, in the meantime, it's quite common, especially in Asia, Pacific, maybe not that much in Europe, but I think it's also common in the meantime in the US. This is a totally different approach of documenting buildings. It has basically nothing to do with the construction process itself. It could be used for that, but it's a totally different approach where you create a mathematical model within the computer and can use the model over the whole lifecycle of the building. That's everything which is behind building information modeling. Then, another term I mentioned is Internet of Things. This is a technology which allows things to be connected by the Internet. So for instance, a washer or whatever you have in your facility. Another, which is not a technology, it's more kind of a process, is that people can use their own devices and not have several smartphones, two laptop computers, one other computer or whatever. So it allows people to just use one device in different environments. This is not that easy as far as IT security is concerned, but at the end of the day, we will end up with those kind of processes. Then, of course, cloud computing and pervasive computing is all around. This allows people to use computers and software and services as part of a cloud, and it is paid more or less for use. Yes, workplace technology is everything which is used on the workplace, and the workplace is not only the office, it could be on a production floor, it could be in a warehouse, wherever it is. Smart grids, this is a technology which is used in modern cities, and it allows people to use energy and other media as part of a grid. And of course, I think the number one in the meantime is Industry 4.0 and digitalization, which is nothing else but interconnecting different parts of, especially the manufacturing industries, by the Internet and by big data and more intelligence. Next one. So what could be learned from FM technology during World Workplace? This is of course, that, as I mentioned just before, that digitalization, infrastructure management is on the move. The building information model and building information modeling is a major element of digitalization, with that, without building information modeling, digitalization does not really work. The FM technology. Back, please. Okay. Facility management technology is a kind of a project that's for Industry 4.0, because only if the production processes can rely on existing facility management technology, you can use that in the future. FM software like IDLMS, which stands for Integrated Workplace Management Systems, CAPM, which is Computer-Aided Facility Management, TMS, Computerized Maintenance Management Systems, become more powerful, flexible, and user-friendly than ever before. So we have much more user-friendly user interfaces, and they are more powerful, they are basically available on as cloud computing services, and cloud computing became kind of standard in many parts of the world. In Europe, people are a little bit more reluctant to that, but more or less in every other part of the world, this is also available and accepted. To be a little bit more precise, I will show you a two-minute video which explains a little bit about the technology I just mentioned.
There seems to be a problem with the light.
Job is starting.
Direction.
Walk 50 feet, then turn right.
Wait, here's your problem.
Warning, confined space. I know located. Enter code 72. Initiate relay. Disable active circuit. Disconnect cable. And move unit.
The whole problem with lights is being fixed. There they are. The lights are back on.
Call Phil.
Call Phil?
Yes. Let me take a look, I'll take you through it.
It's a relay button?
Okay.
Then 784.
Got it.
Yeah, 7C5, right, right. It'll be okay for now.
I'll put in a work order next week. Thanks for your help.
That's your crank number nine. It's a beautiful night for taking.
Thank you. So this short video tries to explain what kind of technology is available and how it could combine. This is no, this is no science fiction. Everything is available at this point in time, and it explains a little bit what I tried to mention before. Thank you.
Well, that was dramatic. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Next slide, please. Well, it was just as dramatic out on the floor. The two gentlemen on the left kind of illustrate that not only did we have star power, but we kept it there. We had, we had one or two people at the booth all the time, and we had quite a bit of attendance. Partly, the little yellow footballs, perhaps they were lemons. In any case, they were for squeezing. Threw a lot of people. We threw them around, we discussed them, people took them home for their kids. Day one, we had a great deal of visitors. Usually, one, two, talking most of the time. We collected their business cards, and even as I speak, those are being developed into a list by Ted Ritter and his associates in Phoenix, and we'll be, we'll be looking to put feedback and interest from those who visited. The result of the, of course, was a drawing for an iPad, and you can see the winner and Marcus there at the bottom. Summary, I think that we were judicious about keeping our booth populated, we were judicious about pulling people in, and to the extent that we get some response from this, it was a really very rewarding time, I hope, for FMCC, and certainly a very interesting time for those who participated. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. If you have any questions, please type them into the chat box. I have just a couple minutes left, and we'll see if we can go over them. One moment. Yes, and for those, I will send out a link to that video that Akim had play, for those that it was, might not have had the greatest transmission. I'll send that out to people so they can see that.
Thanks.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for attending. I want to thank our presenters for presenting today. We have just a couple more slides to get through, and we'll wrap this up. Val, did you have any closing comments you wanted to add?
Not really. Basically, on behalf of FMCC, I would like to thank all the people who actually met us at the event in Denver, took their time off to come and see us at the booth, and also, in some cases, made the event our way to connect with us while we were there. And today, I'd like to thank all the audience that is actually watching this webinar. Thank you so much for making the time and encouraging and supporting the FMCC. Good morning, good day, good evening, have a nice day, everyone.
Thank you, Val. And I just want to make everyone aware of the two upcoming webinars. David Reynolds, who presented today, will actually be presenting our November 19th webinar about KPIs, and then Stephen Brown will be presenting about Evolving FM in Saudi Arabia, will be the first webinar in December. And also, as always, the FMCC likes to bring attention to all the councils that IFMA does have, and provide services. And again, just to say thank you once again. Everyone have a great day. Bye-bye.